Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Groton Board of Education being held on December 1st, Monday, December 1st, 2025 at 5:33 PM. In person tonight, we have Jen, Jen White, myself, Bill Washington, and Dean Antipas. And online, we have Dr. Ackerman, we have Adrian Johnson, we have Mike Whitney, and Ian Thomas. And Jay said he will join us whenever he can. So the first-
Beverly, this is Sean, I'm here as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Sean. The first item on the agenda, and the only item, is discussion and possible action in regard to the memorandum of understanding between the Groton Town and the Groton Board of Education concerning Mary Morrison, the Mary Morrison property. And Dean was nice enough to write the MOU for the board. He got it, and he went back and forth with John Burt about the MOU, so I'm gonna just turn it over to you.
Turn it over to me, thanks.
Everyone had a chance to read the MOU, and Dean will explain it. If you have any questions, raise your hand, and I'll call on you when I see you.
All right, thank you. Very simple, we've gone over this before. The town has a shortage of open space for general public use. And the meadow, I'm gonna call it the meadow, because that's just what it looks like, to the rear of the Mary Morrison property, which is a fairly large property. So it doesn't, this field is not directly a but Mary Morrison, but it's, there's a path, and you get to the meadow behind that. The town has identified that as a neat piece of property that they would like to use for open, for public, for public use. Our concerns, of course, were proximity to the school, access, anything being permanently built, et cetera, et cetera. So we, I agreed to take a first crack at drafting an MOU, memorandum of understanding, just to lay out the terms specifically. Quite briefly, the initial term is five years. And it'll automatically renew for a maximum of four additional five-year terms unless one of the parties signals to the other party that we're done. So either the school district could pull out, or the town could pull out if it wanted to. The board allows the town to use the field for park and open space for parks and rec programs. The use of the field, the town agrees to use the field only outside instructional hours, functions and event. And so long as the town doesn't use the field in conflict with any other use that's been approved by the board of ed. My understanding is that typically, we have not used that meadow back there. The board, the school district is not under any obligation to provide materials, equipment, et cetera, for it. They agree to respect the field, that's the town. They'll, they promise to keep the field clean and orderly. They'll be responsible for any direct costs of maintaining the field, that includes utility, maintenance, custodial, any associated staffing costs, et cetera. And there's an understanding reflected in here that, that since the board pays for certain services from the town parks and rec department, these payments may be reduced by the amount of direct costs, quote unquote, incurred by the town. So there's gonna be a bit of an offset there. We're not charging the town any sort of a rental or user fee for the, for the field. Use of the field will be coordinated. The town will comply with any security measures that the district adopts for school properties. Let's say, town promises, or will make sure that all users of the field confine themselves to the field. There's an insurance provision, there wasn't insurance provision, but of course, we're under the same insurance policy, so there's really no need to, to start having, having fingers pointed. The town agrees to indemnify the board of ed, its officers, employees, and agents for any claims or liability arising from any injuries or damages from the use of the property. The memorandum can be terminated without cause by either party on 30 days' notice, prior written notice. We reserve the right to reassume control of the field as needed for the operation, expansion, and reconstruction of Mary Morrison's school. Just in case that property is identified as a great place to put a new school. Sometimes we do that, we'll flip from one part of the property to another, so we reserve the right to do that. And that's pretty much it. There's some boilerplate in here. But other than that, that is the, that's pretty much the agreement. Any questions?
Ian.
Thank you, yeah. Appreciate your efforts on this. Overall, I think it's a great document, I think it covers all the bases as far as the concerns raised. Just a couple of details. You mentioned about the offset of costs. Could you go into a little bit of detail there, as far as like how the math is gonna be calculated for that? And also, I had a question about the automatic renewal that I'd like to follow up on after that.
Okay, so Sam, would you be able to address the offset business? I mean, if not, that's okay, because I can't, I wasn't part of that.
The only thing I'm aware of is, is the mowing of the, of the field itself. We have a subcontract that comes and does the mowing at that building, and they wanted to have it mowed on a more regular basis. And so I believe it was like $2,500 difference that they will deduct from from the bill that they give us for any work that Parks and Rec, or the town does for us.
Okay, and that's what this is, that's what this refers to?
Yes.
Okay.
And that number would be, I guess, adjusted on any given, like, annual basis if, you know, costs change?
Yeah, it would, it would go through the rest of this contract with the contractor, and I suppose if we get to another contract with them, then we would talk to the town about that.
Okay, yeah, I just, my thought was just inflation, sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, you could modify the term clause, the term provision that says that the, whenever there's an, whenever there's a new, stop for a second, whenever there's a renewal, that the renewal would be on exactly the same terms as they are now. Or we could say return, I could say, you know, renewal on terms that the parties mutually agree to. But that, what that does is, it basically says the parties have to come to yet another agreement. And it wouldn't really function as an automatic renewal after all. But at any time, the parties could say, you know, what, we'd like a new agreement, or we'd like to tweak this. None of this is, you know, Matthew, Mark, Luke, or John.
Understood, understood. Well, that actually ties into my follow-up question about the automatic renewal. I think I'd be more comfortable myself, just if there was sort of a baked-in check-in as far as calling both parties to the table to just verify that we're still good with this. Because, I mean, five-year jumps, there's gonna be turnover in the board, there'll be turnover in the council. So, you know, this could, my only concern with automatic renewal is like, same with subscriptions to streaming services, you know, like, sometimes you forget exactly what all you got going on. And I'd hate to have this thing drift by the by and not be updated. So I'd like to see some language that would require both the board at the time and the council at the time to verify that they're good with the arrangement every five years, and, you know, the renewal is good. Or should there be some, you know, adjustment for inflation, or adjustment for whatever?
Right, so there are no numbers in here, so there's nothing to be indexed. I mean, it could be written so that there is no renewal unless one or both parties take a positive step and say, hey, I'd like to renew. You could write it that way, in which case, what happens is if nobody takes any action, then the MOU is over after five years. For the same reason, because no one's paying attention. So this, this is a way, the way it's drafted now is a way to say, okay, instead of having a block, you know, this is a 20-year agreement, because, you know, both the district and the town are operating on long-time horizons, or like to operate on long-time horizons with things like this, you want some predictability. So this is a way to say, okay, instead of just saying, you've got it for 20 years, and under certain conditions, we can take it back, like we're gonna build a new school or something. We'll just break it up into different, different periods, and it'll automatically be renewed, but you have the ability to say, oh, you know what, there's a new term coming up, we don't want to renew. So it automatically renews. That's, that's what this is meant to solve, is that problem of avoiding a 20- or 30-year block. But okay, that's, that's, that's your suggestion.
Understood, yeah. And I definitely appreciate the fact that you did break it up like that. It's not just a whole cloth 20-year agreement. And I do appreciate that, and I think having the five-year increment, and so my one suggestion would be like, to put in something that would require both to affirm they want to continue. So it calls itself to attention every five years. But I'll wait to hear the rest of, what the rest of the board thinks, and then, you know, maybe make an adjustment or something.
Yeah, I'd be happy to edit if that's the board's will, obviously.
Right, all right. Well, that's it for me for now, thank you.
Any other comments or suggestions? Mike?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Dean, for putting this together. It has a great potential to really help out the town and be favorable to the board of ed as well. I'd emailed a question, I was just wondering about the part that says if the BOE decides to, you know, expand or build a new school. My only question there is, I think that's always the town that actually does that. Is there a way to kind of have that nuance in the MOU, or is it even needed?
Well, usually the school project originates, well, yeah, I would say a school project, major school project would originate with the board of ed. You're right. I mean, it is all one town thing, and on that basis, you could say, we don't even need a memorandum of understanding. It's like having an understanding with yourself. So why write something out? But on the fiction, that we're dealing with two separate entities, that's why it's written this way, as though we're two separate entities. So yeah, I mean, do you, let's see, reserves the right to reassume control of the field, okay, is needed for. Well, yeah, that's just in the context of that fiction. That the BOE, as one half of the brain, would like the field back from the other half of the brain, if you will, or the brainless, for some people. But again, for, as, with this and with anything else, if anybody has any specific language they'd like to change, or obviously you package that in the form of a motion, and if that carries, then I'll be happy to make the edit. Otherwise, I'm not touching it.
Thanks, I just wanted to ask that question. My other one was, I noticed, and I'm okay with this, there's no mention of parking or kind of access to the field with, through like the driveway or the park, using, use of the school parking lot. Is, would that, do you think, come in a different MOU? Or how would that be handled eventually?
Well, that's a logistics question I would defer to Sam. There's only one parking lot for the property. I would think that as long as, as long as the meadow or the field, or whatever you want to call it, is being used after hours, outside of school functions, the parking lot should be available. I think the, the thought was that the field abuts a whole neighborhood, and it would probably be mostly used by folks in that neighborhood, there'd be access through that neighborhood, but honestly, I don't know. If Sam has any, any, any comments or opinions, they're welcome.
No, I think that's exactly, the thought is that they would use the school parking lot, and the neighborhood, there's one of the side streets over in that neighborhood comes pretty close to the, to the property line over there, and people had parked there in that neighborhood previously, and just stepped over to Stonewall, through the stone wall there, to the field. So it's a much shorter walk for there, from there. So I know some elderly people were going there when they had soccer down there previously, but so otherwise, they'd be using a school parking lot.
Yeah. I mean, you know, is it gonna be used to the extent, as, the extent of aquatic lanes, or is it just, they just officially want a place where they can tell people, hey, you can go kick a ball around? I, I don't know.
More like a neighborhood.
Yeah. I mean, the fact is, in that corner of the town, there's a dearth of, of open space for, for general public use.
And then my last comment or question, maybe this is just Sam, I, I remember maybe Mark Barry mentioning that they probably would want to put a couple of handicap parking spots accessible through that neighborhood, so that back entrance. I don't know if that's talked about, but would that be like, within the realm of this, would that be allowed within the realm of the MOU? I think it's, personally think it's quite important to have that handicap access.
I mean, if it's on the public, if it's on the neighborhood side, and those are public streets, that's out of our jurisdiction. Our parking lot, I presume already has, although it's, the handicap spots, I'm sure, are allocated on the basis of school use. Maybe it coincides with field use too, I don't know how those are calculated, but there already are, in our parking lot, handicap spots, so.
Yeah, they're the spots, but there's, I don't think, based on my memory of it, there'd be anywhere, for instance, get a wheelchair or a scooter down along that path and trail.
Yeah, you have a wonderful spot, but then you've got, exactly, you've got this, well, you've got nature in front of you, yeah.
Well, it is paved through, most of it, down to the field, so a motorized scooter would make it, or wheelchair. But of course, it would be beneficial if the, if the town could get a handicap spot on that side street, which is a much shorter distance than it is coming from the parking lots at the, at the, at the school.
As long as it has brakes, it's pretty neat downhill to the field, yeah.
We could mention it to John.
So, so my question is, is that, like, something like that, putting an extra parking spot, even if it comes in on the property from the back end, would that be provided, is that allowed in the MOU? It seems like it could be, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think the idea behind this is that they're basically, when they're done, they're to leave it the way they found it. So there was a concern from early on, you know, what if they build permanent structures? What if they, what if the town builds a gazebo, or, you know, picnicking areas with, with a hardscape? And then they decide to leave it, now the school district has got this deal with all this, all this hardware and hardscape in it, what do we do? They've told us, they just, they'd take it out, or they wouldn't put it in, but they would, they would take it out. So who knows, maybe we'd like to use it too. But putting it a handicap spot, basically paving over part of the field in order to have, yeah, it's a good question. Could they take the meadow and say, well, we're gonna put in five spots, two of which will be handicap, something like that? I'm not even sure if that's feasible without doing a lot of work. Yeah, it's just, if you look at, if you look at the area, it's not really quite feasible.
And if they're parking on the street, Mike, that would be the town putting up a handicap sign, if it's street parking. They're in charge of that. So if you're talking about the back entrance, people parking on that back entrance, and the handicap sign at that back entrance, that would be in the town's domain, not in the board of ed's.
Right, thank, thank you, by the way, for all of you.
I, I suspect, if I have one more comment myself, I suspect what's gonna happen is, unless we have experience like with, with similar situations with it, with the town, there are other times. This is kind of novel, and we'll learn as we go. And so hopefully, the two sides are cooperative, we are after all the same side. But the two sides will be, will be cooperative, and as things come up, we'll, we'll tweak, and we'll be reasonable. That frankly should be the basis of all agreements, very often is not, but this is why we have 50, 50-page, you know, contracts, because the parties, you can't assume anything anymore. But I'd like to assume that we're on the same page as the town, and like I said, if stuff comes up, we'll, we'll deal with it, and this will be tweaked, there'll be a whole new draft, whatever. And you have my phone number. You won't have my email anymore, but you'll have my phone number.
Adrian.
Yeah, I do want to thank you, Dean, for doing this. It is a very good document, from what I read, it, it seems to cover a lot, and it's, it's written in a manner that protects our interests. A couple of things, and if, and the one thing I'm worried about is that there might be, like, our school may need security being a fence or something like that. And if the school system decides that, well, even though it's not meant to be used during the day, it is used during the day, and we need a fence or something like that, would it be on the school system to, to erect that fence? Or is there a way we could put, like, some kind of a security carve-out to say that the town would, would help us with that if there was a need, you know, for some security measures?
I'm gonna defer to Sam on that one.
Yeah, so there is a gate down there on the driveway going back behind the portable buildings that are behind the school, so probably might need some repair or even replacement, but that wouldn't be of great expense anyway, so we, we just block off that driveway and go across the driveway to a fence that's existing there.
All right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Be like a 20-foot gate, something like that.
Yeah, but so for, like, if we felt like there was, there was people down there a lot during the day, and it was just difficult to, I'm just talking about strictly for security, whoever does our security evaluations, if they said we really should have a fence here to kind of separate off the area when the, when there's children in the building, is, is there a means to, you know, kind of, put, take the financial, financial end of that off of the board of ed and, and put it on the town? I mean, is that a reasonable concern?
I think that's something that we would go back to the town and discuss it with the town. And try to come up with agreement with the town if that happened.
All right, yeah, I mean, I'm sure on security, everybody will probably be on the same page, so so if everyone else feels comfortable with that, I'm fine with that. And the, the other thing, you know, and I would see if any other board members have any concern about this, but since we're talking about an early childhood center at that location right now, and we'll probably have some kind of decision or, or path forward in the next month or two, would it be worth tabling this for like a month or two until we know what's going on with the early childhood center?
I don't think so. I don't think this will interfere with the early childhood center.
Yeah, so my understanding is, so far, the field hasn't, I don't think anyone's dreamt, if you've, if you've seen the property, I mean, a lot of it's wet, frankly, most of it's wooded and wet. That field back there, I don't think is used, except maybe perhaps incidentally, it's just, I mean, if you look at the property, you wouldn't even think that that meadow back there is even part of the school property. It just happens to be part of the real estate, happens to be part of the parcel, and there's a path that connects the two. So I don't, it's just my guess that Meadow just has never been contemplated for any use of the school at all. Potentially, I suppose, one could say if you wanted to rebuild a school, you could go all the way back there and use that as a lot. I'm not sure it's a very good lot for that. But, you know, the way we've swapped, you know, swapped space with the other projects, that's the only thing I could think of.
Yeah, I mean,
In the memorandum, it says that we can withdraw at any time.
Yeah, that, that's what I was gonna say. It's, with that type of a project, it would require town support, so I'm sure that would just become part of that process. So the, the other thing, I guess, that kind of goes into that is a, the swing set and jungle gym, or whatever we have for like the little kids' recreation area. Assuming that the one that's existing is probably gonna be difficult for a lot of children to use because of its location and, and the, I guess we'll call it the wetness of it, the fact that it's, that it's just kind of down too close to the swamp. Do we have other space on the property for, for that, for kids to have, you know, outdoor space to play? And maybe this is a question for Sam.
There, there are actually two placegapes on that property. One is closer to the, to the receiving area of the building. If you stay to the right in the driveway and go all the way up on the right, there's one down over the hill there, you can see it over the hill. And of course, the other one out in the, in the field in the front of the building, over toward the church. That is wet because the beaver on the other side of the fence on the church property continue to build their dam, and the church hasn't allowed us to remove the beaver.
The damnable beaver.
And the smaller placegap over by the early childhood wing is the one that they would probably like to use.
Anything else, Adrian?
Adrian, real quick, I, I'll say that the, we, we had baseball practice there with T-ballers earlier this year,
and the field was fine in like, I think it was either March, I mean, May or June. So it wasn't, the, the field was usable for, for playing for kids, and it wasn't wet up until just past the placegap.
All right, so the, the placegap on the left there as you're going in was dry, you're saying?
Yes.
All right, I thought that placegap was, was frequently wet. So do we have enough space near where the smaller one is to the right as, as you're driving in for a larger placegap area? I apologize, I haven't been into the property in quite a while.
Well, it would need some fixing and a fence to go around it. There's a piece of fence that needs to be added. And we have to take a closer look to see if there's repairs and things that we would need.
All right, but would that area be large enough to support, you know, however many classrooms we're, we're potentially looking at having there?
Yes, they probably wouldn't bring all of the kids out at once, they might take a couple of classrooms out at a time.
But again, remember, if anything happens and we're gonna use Mary Morrison as an early childhood center, we will go back and we can withdraw from this MOU.
That's right.
So we don't, you know, let's, let's cross that bridge when we get there, because we can always withdraw if we need to. Any other questions?
If we want a question, we can make a motion then.
There should have been a motion first, actually, but.
But, yeah, is everyone okay?
Yeah.
Make your motion.
Like to make a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding between the board of ed and the town of Groton concerning the Mary Morrison property.
I'll second that motion. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Sean's second here. You got my paper. All right, all those, Ian?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make the amendment, proposing amendment that we adjust the language such that there's a positive affirmation every five years instead of automatic renewal.
Okay, you would like to have an amendment saying, what again?
That there would be a positive affirmation by both bodies every five years to continue the MOU as opposed to the automatic renewal.
I'll second. Whitney?
All right, if I may ask, so, so no renewal, runs for five years, and then no renewal unless a party or both parties signal that they want it renewed? How do you want me to rewrite it?
Um, I'm not exactly, right, understood. I guess it would be compel an agenda item for them to consider it, I guess, yeah. And it would, it would expire if not renewed, affirmative, by both parties.
Right. I mean, I can write that.
That would be the intent, yeah. If, if we need actual language to vote on tonight, I guess I would, I would, I would ask that you could maybe throw something together, because you got the legal mind.
But, I mean, I need, I need a five-minute recess, Your Honor, do it on the floor like I've done in the past. Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to redraft language.
Mike, your question?
Yes, thank you. I, I think the current agreement would be signed by at least John Burt and the, the board of ed chair, maybe by a superintendent and Park and Recs too, is that right?
No, not superintendent.
Okay, so board of ed chair, John Burt.
The board chair and the board- The Board Chair and the Board Secretary.
As a witness.
And then the Board Attorney.
And then on their side, is it John Burt and Park and Rec?
On their side is the Town Clerk, the Town Manager, and the Town Attorney.
Okay, so could, is that something that, could it be just resigned? Um, every five years, I mean, that that might do it, right?
Hmm. Well, yeah, I mean, I'd have I'd have to rewrite this, cause it's cause. That right now would automatically, I can change that very easily, that says that it 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 does not renew unless one of the parties takes a positive step. To say, hey, I'd like to renew, and the other party agrees, the other party does not, then there's no renewal, it's like a lease.
Right, who's the Board Secretary, is that the Associate Chair?
That's Adrian.
That's Adrian.
At the moment.
Yeah. So Ian's thing was there will be a positive affirmation every five years by both parties.
Yeah, I mean, if I had, like I said, if I had a couple of minutes, I could write out the language, but that's that would be how it would function. You know, the term expires. I'm gonna have to add more language, actually, I can't just, you know, cross out a couple of words here, but you wanna make sure that whatever term you're in. That expires unless the parties agree to renew.
Dr. A?
We're still on discussion, right? Um, so here's here's my take on it, all the key parties have agreed to this. We had a lawyer, an expert, write it. I say that if we start fussing around with this now, that opens the door for the town to start fussing around with it. And we're not gonna ever get this done in time, so I say if we have all the experts and all the key players. Uh 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 understanding it and agreeing to it, and I say, let's just move on it.
Alright, so all those in favor of the amended motion, that's.
Well, the amendment to the motion.
The amendment to the motion. Do you want me to say what the amendment to the motion was, or does everybody understand what it is? Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand if you're online and if you're here.
We show you too.
Raise your hand too. Okay, so we have three people in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Nope.
Oh, four, four people in favor of the amendment.
Is it three?
I don't know.
One, Mike.
Mike is hands is down.
Hands down, Adrian, and Ian. Okay, all those who oppose of the amendment, raise your hand, if you're online. Sean, which way are you going, Sean?
I'm for the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so three people for the amendment.
Right, a party of order, roll call, vote?
Okay, I was just getting ready to do that, but Dr. A, don't say anything yet for me, please.
No, 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 I was, no, no, I, no, I was, I was, no.
Okay.
Yeah, she's a no.
Okay, alright, the three people I have that are for the amendment are Sean, Adrian, and Ian. Is that correct?
Uh, can we do the roll call, be much easier, I think.
Okay, no, alright. Ian, how do you vote for the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, Sean?
Yes.
Jen?
No.
Dean?
I'm staying.
Um, Adrian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dr. A?
No.
And I'm a no, because we had lawyers and everybody look at this, so I'm a no for that, it's just. Okay, and I don't see Jay or me, so, okay, the amendment passes. There's four people for the amendment, three against it, and one abstained. So all those in favor of the memorandum with the amendment? Mike, Sean, what do you, yeah, start your hand up, Sean? All those in favor of the amend uh the memorandum with the amendment, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Dr. A?
No.
I'm Sean.
Yes.
Jen?
No.
I'm a no. And Dean?
I'll be a yes.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. Okay, and I'll call for an adjournment.
Me, mo- motion to adjourn.
Okay, it is six oh nine and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.